Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals is meeting tonight, Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, 7:00 PM, in the Town Hall Meeting Room 124. Now, members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the remote connection. Thank you all, and we're glad you're all in attendance. I see we have several online, including one of our board members, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Where are you tonight? You're in Virginia or something?
Yeah, I'm in my, uh, my one-bedroom condo in Virginia.
Oh, there you go. Looks like you have nice brick walls.
Yes.
Hopefully it's not, hopefully it's not a prison cell, so, you know.
Thanks a lot.
You said one room condo, you know, that's what they call them over in Norfolk, MCI. You're welcome. Anyway.
We have two minutes before we start the 7:05 hearing.
Sure.
So maybe you can accept the October 15th minutes if we're going to review them. I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 15th meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
You good with that?
Yep.
And we're gonna take a...
Joe Sebastian, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Chris McCaffrey, aye.
Very good. You, you don't have to aye us if you don't want to. But we're, we're very appreciative that you're here, Mike.
Yeah, I take care of the old copy, okay. Right, just go...
All right. We're waiting for 7:05. We've got...
Half a minute, I think.
I was gonna say 30 seconds, according to the clock that's on the wall.
Right.
That must be official time.
On the screen, 7:05.
7:05 on the screen, though.
All righty. Notice here probably given, but in accordance with Mass. with Chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Laws, any and all men thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in Room 124 at Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, for the following application: Second Generation Energy LLC, 7:05 PM, for special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 9, and Norfolk Zoning Bylaws 310-4 dot 2 and 310-7 dot 6, to install a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system as an accessory to a residential building. The property is located 5 White Pond's Drive, Accessory map 13, Block 41, Lot 43, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you. That was kind of a mouthful.
Sorry.
Solar photovoltaic.
Yes, I stumbled over that one.
No problem. All right. Anybody here for 5 White Pond Road? Yes, sir.
Doug Wall, I'm with Second Generation Energy.
Yep.
We need you to, we need you to state your name and use the microphone. Thank you.
Doug Wall with Second Generation Energy, representing the homeowner.
Do we have the homeowners here?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Is there plans or anything?
Do you have plans or anything? I saw them, I saw them on, we had them in our...
Bring them up?
Can you bring them up?
Yeah, Pauline will bring them up across the screen.
Where is White's Pond Street?
Right behind here.
Right behind here?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Union Castle, White Pond.
Okay. White's Pond is up on the Castle Drive, kinda up there?
Yeah, yeah, they connect. Castle and White Pond come together, and then Castle's off Union.
Okay. I know, I know. It's, 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 it's tight up there, isn't it?
We don't have printouts. We'll display them.
That's fine. They haven't changed with the ones that are on the website.
No, no.
No, I don't think so.
No, same.
If they did, they didn't send them to us.
Just checking.
Doug, what, what page would you like to look at?
Uh, you wanna start there?
Yeah, let's start there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the closest point is 50 feet from the lot line, which is there, if you can, the lot line is the edge of the sidewalk, and then there's the street, and as you see, I believe there are actually three trees that are here, uh, along the sidewalk. Um, not taking them down. We like trees, too. Uh, and then the back of the array is pretty much predominantly, uh, is, is in the woodlands. It, um, the lot is basically built on fill, so it's, it's the back of the, just behind the solar array is a, is a little bit of a drop, maybe eight or 10 feet, and then there's just all woods behind. Um, there's a little garden area in, in front of the house. Um, but I think it's fairly sheltered from, from the street.
Do we have aerial view?
I was gonna say... I'll show you in a second.
From my, from my perspective right here, it looks like the, the proposed field is gonna be in front of the house.
So the, the, the street is directly this way. It's just, yeah, to the front side of the house.
Can I, can I ask a good, a second question?
Sure.
I'd like to ask a second question. Um, why not the roof? Just curiosity. I always ask.
The homeowner, um, I guess...
The roof is, the roof is preferable.
Of course it is.
Well, this is north, this is northwest, this is southeast, heavily by trees, so it's not gonna get much sun anyway.
Put on both, it's the same as the array.
But it's not gonna produce like the array. For an array that's facing due south, I can get 30% more power out of it.
Yeah, I know. I don't like the front yard.
Doug, you mentioned the, uh, thank you, you mentioned the, the array is about, is 50 feet from the sidewalk?
Yes.
That back, do you know if it's from the, he says from the, from the paved area of the sidewalk, whatever, is it from the right of way? Do you know where the right of way ends? Sometimes sidewalks out within the right of way.
Oh, there's a, there's a marker.
So it's 50 feet from the right of way?
Yeah.
There's a stone bound?
Yeah.
There's a stone bound.
Yeah, probably on the corner. It's a newer subdivision, so it'd be at the corner. There'd be a pound.
Can you, uh...
Can I see that up there?
Yeah. No, 'cause I'm doing it on Zoom. I'm showing the aerial image.
Oh, you want me to show the aerial?
I mean, that's, that's a heavily wooded lot.
I can't put it up there.
Yes.
I would, I would venture to say the roof's probably your best bet.
It's high.
Yeah.
Can you see that?
No, probably not.
Yeah. Where's that? Where's his own book?
I'm looking at that.
You looking it up there?
I'm looking at this, right?
Yeah.
So a few questions came up, at least looking at the plans and, uh, if I might share.
Yeah.
So one, the plans actually say that it's a roof-mounted system, but then this is, this is shown as ground mount. Is that just a...
I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure why it says roof mount.
Okay. Um, I guess the other question that did come up was, it did say, why not roof mount versus ground mounted? Like, what, why? I guess from a electrical production standpoint, why not, um, 'cause the roof mount is ground, is by right, this is by special permit on the ground? Yeah, that's a question.
And it's an accessory use, right?
It's accessory, yeah. And then, um, the Board of Health did wanna know in terms of where the septic system is located, what's not shown on those plans, and make sure it doesn't impact that, so I don't think so.
So, if you can go back to the other, that previous diagram, second page?
I'm gonna check my notes, 'cause I have the...
Okay.
I'd venture to say it's in the front yard there, 'cause that's where there's no trees.
Yes.
Andy, does it say anything?
I'm trying to get a clarification.
Septic is 36 by 50.
What's the clarification?
In this area, right in here.
310, 7 dot 6.
That's gotta be a septic.
Is that applied correctly to the solar?
That's a special permit criteria.
All right. In 310, 4 dot 2.
That's the use table?
Well, how big is, how big is the tank? Yeah.
Probably 6 by 12.
Okay, well, I've got a 36 by 50 septic. That must be the leach field.
Yeah.
You might, you might see it on the, uh...
Back close to the house.
From the plans?
I pulled it up on the screen, the use table.
You might see it.
Okay.
You might see the pipe out there on this...
So, so it's...
That's the use table.
Much further in front.
Okay.
Yes, you see it right there.
Ground mounted, so it's...
R2 district.
It's all zoning.
Everything, they have to do a special...
It's across the board.
Yeah, they get D-box right here. Yep.
No, it's a use, not accessory.
It's a use, it's not accessory use, it's considered a ground mount.
It's not accessory use if it's on the ground.
But that would be a ground mounted, a special permit. A roof is not, right?
Right.
What are you finding there, Mike?
Septic's in the front.
Septic is in the front, yeah.
Yeah, in front of the house.
Yep.
There's a garden, like, right in front of the house.
The garden's probably in top.
Yeah.
What does, uh...
We're trying to look at the use table right now.
So ground-mounted solar arrays are all special permits?
Of course.
Okay.
So are.
Right.
Without a special permit.
Without a special permit. Roof-mounted is a done deal.
By right.
Yep.
By right.
Yes.
But, but can a ground mounted, can accessory structure be in the front yard of that zone? Period. It's an accessory structure.
That is...
So, can an accessory structure be in the front yard?
Right.
Of a dwelling?
And that's a...
And I, that's what we're looking for.
Rich can help with this stuff.
It was 50 feet away from the front lot line.
The dwelling, the dwelling unit, it needs to be 50 feet away, but there's a, there's an accessory building and/or fence and/or swimming pool or anything of that sort, always usually references itself to the front plane of the home, so you need to be behind that.
Right.
So that's...
You can't put a shed in.
You can't put a shed, even if the house is 60 feet back, you can't put the shed 10 feet in front of the house.
Right, it's gotta be 50 feet.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be 50 feet, yes, because that's a front lot line, but it also needs to be behind the plane of the front of the house.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read it anywhere, so I'd have to clarify that.
We're gonna clarify that for you right now, I think.
That is true.
It is.
It is that, that, the setback is that 50 feet across the...
But if the house is setback further than the 50, isn't it a, it goes by the front plane of the house for accessory buildings or an accessory?
I don't think so.
No.
I think the...
It's the front yard. Required front yard.
It's just a 50?
That was the nuance to it, 'cause we have all those other houses with that situation.
Yeah.
We had some garages in the...
Yeah, we did have some garages in the...
So I think it's just a 50-foot straight line.
It's just a 50-foot, okay.
It's just 50 foot.
I'm still, back in the dark ages, you know, six months ago, so...
But is it an accessory structure?
It is considered an accessory structure, yeah.
What do you call it, principal or accessory? I don't really manage it. So used by special permit?
So, so, can I say?
Yeah, I think you're gonna see it.
Doug, what's the height of the array?
Table, though. What's that?
What's the height?
Which page of the use table is for him?
Yeah. Height at the back.
Which page is this for him?
It's not, it's a...
It's an addendum.
It's an addendum.
It's at the very beginning. If you want the accessory use table, it's at the very back, Mike.
Yeah, the only detail's in the use table.
So the height is just over 10 feet in the back?
Yep. I'll be honest with you, we're, we're not fans of ground-mounted solar.
Not in the front yard.
Not in the front yard especially, so we're trying to get to the bottom of that and figure that one out. Is, while we're waiting for Mike to look up what he's looking up, um, anybody have any questions or anything? Yes, sir. Please, please announce your name and use the microphone.
Yeah, Mike, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, all. Uh, my name is Patrick Day. I live at Ten Castle. Uh, I know we just covered it, but the quarter of Castle on White's Pond Drive, so about three or four houses away from the project site. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. Uh, thank you to the board members for your time and efforts serving on behalf of the residents of Norfolk. I'd like to express my opposition to the application for a special permit to install a ground-mounted solar panel array at 5 White's Pond Drive. I can, I am concerned about the significant impact this installation could have on our community and the neighborhood. Allowing and approving this project sets a precedent that could open the door to more ground-mounted solar installations in residential areas, and I think a member of the board already recognized it, particularly in a front yard of a residential property. To my prior point on precedence, the land for this proposed project has already been cleared, multiple large pine trees have already been removed, and materials for the solar panels array delivered to the site. In review of our zoning bylaws, it is my understanding that it is not standard practice for this work to have already been completed without zoning board approvals. This installation could significantly alter our neighborhood's residential feel. In review of the plans, I believe the installation will detract from the aesthetic appeal that contributes to our neighborhood's charm and character. Per the plans, there is no fencing or additional landscaping to be installed to help mitigate the aesthetic impact. There is also a legitimate concern that such a development could adversely affect property values. The presence of a very large ground-mounted solar array in a front yard might deter potential home buyers who prioritize, excuse me, the visual and acoustic environment of their prospective home. This could lead to decline in demand and consequently, property values in our neighborhood. While I support the use of sustainable energy, fellow neighbors and I ask the board to visit the site to truly understand the scope as well as the impact of this project, also that the board is thoughtful and thorough conversations before any approvals are granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, this is Chris McCaffrey.
Yes.
We had a ground-mounted, uh, solar panel system on Secong Street, right?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't pull up the file. Can, can someone pull up that plot plan? 'Cause that is ground-mounted, and I know you can see it from the road.
It is.
Yeah.
That, that's, um, I wanna think it's like 32, 32 or something like that, Secong Street?
Yeah, that, that might give us an example, anyway, of, uh...
Not a good example.
Not a good one, I don't think.
No. Maybe not a good one.
There's another one, Park Street.
There is another one on Park Street.
Yes.
And, and the reason for that is they had a hip roof, and there was no place to get the solar on the roof when you have a hip.
Right, correct.
I mean, we, he's the electrical inspector. Um, he did a lot of investigating, I know, about what it makes for power, and, yeah. Um...
You have panels too, Mike, right?
I do.
On the roof?
I have 76.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a believer of the roof, but, um...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did you wanna address that gentleman's concern? Was there any work, or, other than clearing, 'cause that could be done anyway, but was, was there an installation done already, or?
There's no installation. There are parts, uh, on site, but there are no installations been done yet. The homeowner did have a tree company come out and take some limbs down that, I don't know if he took trees down. Uh, I know it did take some, okay.
They can do that.
I know it took some...
They can do that.
They're allowed to do that.
They can do that. They, they, yep, yep. They can clear cut the lot. They have a house there.
Yeah.
It's not a new house.
Current location of the ground mount, I think he had a, some kind of a garden area or something, that he decided to, now he was gonna put some, some plants in front of the solar.
You guys mind if I ask one more question?
Go ahead, just state your name.
Well, can I just, 'cause you said you wanted to put a fence around it. Is a fence prettier than a solar array?
Absolutely.
What'd you, what, would I, can I paint it black?
Well, as a, as a...
Guys, guys, please, if you have questions, please come through us, just so that we can, just so that we can kinda monitor what's going on.
You can always talk outside, but if you wanna...
Yeah.
Also, we have other buggers to listen to. Mind if we get them on record?
Yeah, and sorry, my question on the aesthetics was just the aesthetic impact, right? That was just, I didn't see anything on the plans as far as anything to remedy that. One more point, um, I forgot to, to make is just how this relates to, uh, I'm not sure if there's wetlands that are right behind this. Um, there is wetlands, I believe, right on to the left of this property, how I'm looking at it. Um, so again, not sure if that impacts setbacks or anything like that.
You put GIS on that?
Yeah.
It's a good sized lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Wow.
Other places to put it?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Why, outside of trees?
Oh.
Oh, that's why.
It's where it was.
Yeah.
Sir?
Hi. Yeah. Uh, my name is Jim Souza. I live at 3 White's Pond Drive, which is directly next door.
Okay.
Um, I'm wondering, how far is that from my property line? Has that been looked at? I'm just curious.
You're on the left side?
Yeah.
I think it said 40 feet. Believe it's 40 feet from that point to the line when I looked at the plot plan.
Okay. And I guess my, my question is, is, is why is the roof not feasible? Um, there are no trees in the front yard, and there's plenty of sunlight coming down on the front side of the house.
Doug said that it's a homeowner's preference.
It was a homeowner's preference, and it's not gonna produce like a ground mount will. It's just it's facing northeast. It's just, you're not gonna get the power that he's gonna want, and it's gonna cost him a lot more to put additional panels on the roof.
Okay, yeah, that's my question. How many panels are there now?
I think we got 35.
35? So, what, you gotta go to 40 or 42 on the roof to equal the 35?
I probably have to go to like 50.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, look at the direction. You know, put them facing the trees, how much, how much energy do you think you'd get out of that?
Uh, yeah, I don't know about 50.
So the front would not be sufficient by itself, is what you're saying?
To the front of the garage.
I'm sorry to hear your question.
The, the front would not be sufficient by itself in terms of...
No, it's, 'cause that front house is, front of the house is facing, uh, northwest. So, northwest...
That's all sun the second half of the day.
Correct, okay, so, so if I have a 100-watt panel, it's facing due west or east, I'm gonna get 100 watts out of that panel.
Same thing.
If I have a 100-watt panel facing due south, I'm gonna get 130 watts out of that panel. Facing northwest, I might get 80 watts out of that panel. So, do you understand that?
But that's only a peak, and, and, and we all know, 'cause I'm a big solar guy.
Yeah.
I see it, you know? 10 minutes makes a difference on panel wattage. So, wait, show, show me how that's tilted. Show me the tilt. What's the high side of that on the back?
It's 10 feet on the back.
On the back?
Yeah.
So that's tilted towards me. That's all the array right there. It's tilted this way.
Yes, it's tilted.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the high end.
Mm-hmm.
Low end, yeah.
All right, if it's gonna be...
So...
So Doug, what, tell me if I'm, help me out here, I'm not, I'm nowhere near an expert in this area at all, but is it feasible to do roof-mounted, put more panels up, and accomplish the same task?
Are you able to do that?
Is it, is it possible?
Oh, anything's possible, yeah.
Well, not anything's possible. I mean, is it...
You only have so much roof area.
Right, right. But, okay, that, that roof could accommodate enough panels to, to get the same output from that proposal.
I can't say without putting it on a model. I didn't model the house.
What's your best guess? Pretty close?
It's a big roof.
Let me ask you, can I ask you a question slightly different?
I would've thought you would've done that with the work with, that's all, just, you know, when you, I would've thought they would've looked at both.
They, no, he didn't. He specifically wanted a ground mount, so I didn't address the house at all.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question slightly different way.
Yeah.
Panels on the roof versus that ground-mounted solar array is there, how much any production's gonna be there? Is there gonna be a, a production of energy back to the grid more than they actually need to operate and maintain their home? So essentially, creating a power production surcharge as opposed to just offsetting their cost for the home?
35 panels. Um, so you wanna say is he gonna overproduce enough to produce more than?
Yeah.
More than they use, yeah.
Can you, yeah, are you overproducing with those ground mounters versus the roof?
He's heating, um, with electric heat, heat pumps, so he's got a high energy bill. That's what he's trying to eliminate.
So if he had on the roof, he couldn't do the same thing?
It could have to be a bigger field because of the location.
Right.
But I think your, I think your question is, is it, will that, will the, will the ground mount, in, in, in theory, produce more than what, will they be able to sell back to the grids?
So...
Certain times of the year?
So, the idea was that it would cover almost 100% of his usage.
Right.
He was not like making money on...
So in the summer, it's gonna overproduce, and then he's gonna bank it, and he'll... So in the summer, it's going to overproduce, and then he's going to bank it, and in the winter, it's going to underproduce, and the bank is going to go to, because he's going to do, he, he can't make a grid bigger than needed because he can't get the tax incentives, right? I mean, you can't, you can't tell him, sell him forty-five panels if thirty-eight does it.
I could, but then he's going to be sitting on a credit that he has nothing to do, he can't get rid of.
What?
Yeah.
No batteries involved here?
No, there's no batteries involved.
Okay.
So it's just, it's a case of my opinion, let's have them come back with both proposals, the roof and the, and the ground, and show...
About to come back in four weeks.
Well, the proposal now is for this. We can, we can vote on this, that's his proposal. They can, they can always come back if they want, and they can continue if they want, but I think...
I just want to confirm, you said that the height of it's going to be ten feet?
Ten feet, a hundred and twenty-one inches off grid.
Just a quick follow-up question. Do the board intend to vote on this proposal tonight?
I don't, I think we're going to have to go, I want to go see the site.
Thank you.
Just personally, so.
Thank you.
That's kind of why I was asking where it was. Yeah, I think we'll continue the hearing until next...
We'll get out there and then...
I put two cents in.
Absolutely. Just say your name.
I'm Kathy Casali. I'm from Five Crossbow Road. I'm directly across from that property, and I've lived there for thirty-two years. And I'm going to wake up in the morning and face that, and I am extremely distressed about it. I don't understand if there are other options. My next door neighbor has solar on their roof, same size house, and they don't even have as much sun exposure, and they're doing fine with it. Why we have to go to something that is such an eyesore? Our neighborhood is a really beautiful neighborhood. People walk, people come from other neighborhoods to walk in our neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the front yard, we're going to have this giant industrial looking mess, and I'm going to have to look at it every day. I am going to urge you to please rethink doing this, so that the people that have been in this community for a very long time don't have to wake up in the morning and have somebody who moved in two and a half years ago destroy what we look at.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something?
Say your name.
I'm her husband, Jack Casali, Five Crossbow. Just to take it a step further, a bigger concern of mine is if, if you allow this to happen, what's to stop, you know, one of our other neighbors from basically doing the same? I mean, my house faces north, so I'm really not a good candidate, you know, to put them on the roof. But my front yard's really big, so I could probably have them facing my house, you know, over, you know, facing over the house because the sun's behind, and probably still be fifty feet away from, but obviously, I don't want to look at that. But what, if I did want to do that, if you allow this, what's to stop the next person, and the next person, the next person? That's all I wanted to say.
It's taking away the charm of this neighborhood.
I mean, honestly, I think it's taking away the charm from the...
It's the whole town.
It's the whole town. It's not just your neighborhood. I completely agree with you.
Just, just one more point, and hopefully I conveyed that thoroughly enough in my, my little statement, but the precedence, to your point, I'm south facing, I share a front yard, it's a large front yard with my neighbor. If this is approved, and it seems it's a blanket approval, so now there's precedence that my neighbor, hopefully they, we'd have a discussion, they would not do that, but now they could just put their ground mounted solar array in their front yard, right?
They have to come see us.
They still have to be fifty feet above the...
They still have to be fifty feet, true, but for a large front yard...
And it's a special permit, and a special permit is not necessarily precedented.
Gotcha. I just, I think that's a slippery slope that we start setting.
And I would agree with you on that, and that's why we have much discussion whenever, whenever a ground mounted solar array comes up. It's, it's, it's a difficult scenario because they meet all the criteria that they're supposed to meet at this point, outside of, we have to take into a fact what is already there, and what is in the neighborhood, and what is in keeping. That's one of our criteria that we have to look at. Is there another option? I believe the roof is an option. So they, they realistically have four weeks to come back with another one, maybe another plan or another idea, or they can take this off the table and just do the roof. By rights, they're allowed to do it on the roof, so.
I understand.
So, that's kind of the, we don't like to give out special permits if we don't have to, because special permits mean that they're trying to do something that's not in the bylaws already. So, the bylaws have been here, they've been tried and true for years, we're trying to keep to them as much as possible, but there are incidences that arise that require this. This is one of them. But is it the only way that they could do it? Not necessarily, and that's one of the things that we'll have to discuss as a board and get out there and see the property, and hopefully they come back and remove it from the table and say they're going to do it on the roof, but you never know.
I don't, I don't think we approved anything in the residential area like this.
I don't think we have either.
With a butter, butters...
With butter dissension?
We had no butter issues in the past, so this is something to take seriously.
We did one on Cleveland Street, right?
Yeah, we did the one at the paint factory.
Right, but that...
But the buggers were here and spoke.
Any of the buggers spoke in favor of it.
It's not residential, by the way.
But that was actually, it was a residential, a budding residential, so it was actually more setback.
Correct.
Right, right. Agreed.
All right.
Doug, do you have, do you have anything else you want to add? I, I think what we're going to do is we're going to continue it to the next, to the next meeting, if that's okay.
And that would give us time if we want to take a ride by and take a look at the property. We won't go on the property, obviously, but we could take a ride by.
But we can take a look, look, see.
So...
Our next meeting, I'll let you know.
Well, I guess the other thing to think about is, is your client considered they want to do the ground mounting, and the panels are facing this way, that revegetate that whole front, so that way, the view, from the street view, you don't see the panels.
Well, they're planning on putting some vegetation in front of the array, but...
There's nothing shown on the plan.
There's nothing on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to...
That's just the engineer's plan, that's just, yeah, that's...
But we, we, we don't know that from what we're seeing, and you don't know exactly what they're doing, and there's no commitment to that, so.
And if we, if we do come back, so this is a civil... I would want this to have the measurements and have a stamp on it as well, from the street, the sideline, and the back, if you come back with a certified civil engineer stamp on it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So to be clear, this meets all the town guidelines, but right at the moment, you're not going to approve it?
I'm not going to say that. We're not going to take it to a, we're not going to take it to a vote right now.
Okay.
Because if we took it to a vote, it might not get approved. But we're, we're trying to do you a, do you a solid by going out, visiting the site, seeing...
That's not right at all.
I mean, when you say it meets all town bylaw, I'm not sure what, you know, it's subject to a special permit, right?
I mean, it meets town requirements.
It does meet the town requirements.
It means the fifty foot setback, if that's what you're asking, yes, but there's other requirements of the special permit.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
We have to check, is anybody online with a butter?
I will.
Yeah.
Before we go.
From a technical standpoint, it meets the fifty foot setback.
So...
From what you're showing, from what you're telling us.
So one of the points made was if it was something else, which I'm not married to ground mounts.
No, I hear you.
If there was a pergola, and it was on the roof of a pergola, would that be...
I wouldn't speculate.
Repulsive to the community?
I'm not going to speculate on that.
I don't think I have a hypothetical.
Come back with, come back with some options possibly, other than that, and there might be wiggle room. I mean...
I think you heard from the buggers, you heard from the board. I think the big concern is, it's, it's in the front yard. I don't know this particular neighborhood. Seeing, seeing the, what I saw on the screen here, it looks like a beautiful residential neighborhood. I'm sure it is. I'm sure those people live there for those same reasons. They like, they like that nice look, and, and that certainly would impose on that from what, from what I'm seeing tonight. But I'll take a ride out there and look, you know, and if you want to amend your plan, we'll, we'll look at anything, and your buggers are always more than welcome to come back. We certainly enjoy their feedback and their input. They, you folks live there, you know, so we, we look for that feedback.
Understood.
Yeah.
Just, this delay is not going to, it will cost the homeowner ten thousand dollars if he decides to go with this project, if it was approved. So, coming back in a month is not going to help him a bit. I'll just say that right now. That's why I'm looking for an alternative. If you're not going to approve it tonight, I know he's not going to, he's going to have to find a, a quick solution like tomorrow, that I can prove with the, with the building inspection department and move forward with it.
I can't see an approval tonight, so.
Right, understood.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody, any, anybody else online that had any questions or anything they wanted to add to this?
Or was the, or the board member was online, comment?
It was Chris and Josephine.
Oh, Josephine had a comment? Someone had a comment? I heard the, I heard an audio.
Josephine, did you have anything, or Courtney, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm in a butter, so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay. And Josephine had a comment?
She can speak as in a butter.
You can still speak as in a butter.
I know, but I, I share a rear lot line, I don't see this, and so I'm going to respectfully go ahead and...
We understand. Yep, no problem.
Josephine? I'm muted.
Josephine's muted, and her audio is not working, which is all good.
Yeah, this is Chris McCaff. I, I'm amazed that the project was going ahead with buying materials prior to getting approval.
So, anyway, I thank you. I think we'll...
Make a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue this.
What's the date of the next meeting?
I don't have it there.
December seventeenth?
December seventeenth.
So motion to continue the hearing.
Sixteenth, right?
Seventeenth.
Let me double check.
It says December sixteenth.
That's next year, though.
That's next year.
Seventeenth, yeah. Seventeenth.
You guys are way ahead.
We'll try to get it done this year.
Losing years.
Motion to continue the hearing for Five White Pond Drive to the seventeenth of December at seven oh five PM.
I'm going to second that motion.
All in favor, let's take a roll call vote.
Josephine, you know, I?
David Axberg, I.
Tim Martin, I.
Chris McCaff, I.
You want to say I?
I.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
There will be another public hearing.
There will be another notice for public hearing.
Well, not, no. It'll be next month, December seventeenth.
We're planning on being here.
It's already on, it's on the agenda. There won't be, there will not be a new notice.
You can, you can, you could maybe call the office a day, day before if you wanted to, and find out if it's been removed, but that's the only thing that would happen. Otherwise, it's on the agenda.
We're not going to remove it.
It wasn't a quorum.
We're not removing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
You very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Notice here, I gave in accordance with chapter forty-eight Massachusetts general laws and any and all, it's there too, that a public hearing will be held by zoning board approvals on Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven ten PM, well, beyond that now, at room one twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, the SBA GC Towers LLC and AT&amp;T requests a special permit to allow for a one eighty foot above ground monopole style pole tower with a four foot lighting rod on top of the tower with ATD wireless communication attendant and associated equipment pursuant to sections three ten, six dot thirteen F, it's three ten seven point six C two, and three ten seven dot six D of the Norfolk zoning bylaws. The property is located one hundred R Pond Road, assesses map nineteen block sixty-nine lots forty-three and forty, fifty-eight, excuse me, and the C one and C one B zoning district, wireless communication overlay district four, excuse me. Got it?
I got it.
Sorry about that.
All right, who's here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Ed Parry, it's P A R E. I'm an attorney of Brown Rudnick. I'm here representing SBA and AT&amp;T. I do have a brief presentation, if I could share my screen?
Oh, you can get them there.
There you go.
This is where the radio station was.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
What's the height of that? The radio?
It was two eighteen, it was in here.
It was two existing.
It was higher.
When's the AM tower, right?
We all set? Good to go? Can you see the...
We can, yes.
Great. So as I said, I'm Ed Parry, I'm here representing SBA and AT&amp;T. We are proposing to actually replace two existing guy towers, two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and eighteen feet tall, with one new styled monopole tower to accommodate AT&amp;T's coverage needs. AT&amp;T is not located at the site yet, and hopefully, through this process, we'll be able to do so. I do have a few people, I think everybody that's on the screen right now is with me, so I don't think we need to introduce them if there are any particular questions on any particular area, we can certainly bring them in. So you're looking at the as-built survey, the two kind of points where you see the three guy wires coming up, or where the existing towers, guy towers are located, those lines are the guys which attach and keep the two towers up. One is here, near the little red box, which I'll explain in a second, and the other tower is to the west of that location. box, which I'll explain in a second, and the other tower is to the west of that location. What SBA is proposing to do is to remove both of these towers, but we would bump out our compound to accommodate the new monopole. AT&amp;T would then install its equipment on the monopole. T-Mobile, which is on this tower, this guy tower here, would get off that tower, obviously, it won't be there, locate on the monopole, and Dish Wireless is also on that tower, they would also move. We kept the tower in close proximity, so the ground equipment doesn't have to move for T-Mobile and Dish. AT&amp;T will install its ground-mounted equipment on an existing pad, so it's really a win-win, we don't bring in any new impervious surfaces, we're using an existing concrete pad. The town loses those two guy towers, and we get one new monopole in there, AT&amp;T has a need for its coverage requirements at 175 feet antenna center lines, that produces 180-foot monopole. T-Mobile can then attach, they'll get a little bit more height for their installation, plus with the limitations of these AM towers, they can, they can upgrade their system, put a full antenna array on the new monopole. The enlarged site plan, this is the compound that I talked about, this is the red area that was bumped out, that was in our as-built survey, so T-Mobile is located here, is my arrow moving?
Yep.
Yes, I hear you.
T-Mobile's located here, Dish is located here, this is the existing concrete pad where AT&amp;T would install its walk-up cabinet. All of the coax fiber lines would then run over to the monopole, the coax would run, coax of fiber would run up inside the monopole and to each of the antenna arrays. So, this is the tower elevation, AT&amp;T at the top, T-Mobile in the second slot, Dish in the third, and then we designed the monopole to accommodate a fourth carrier, there are four carriers currently operating in the market, so it'll provide for future co-location opportunities in accordance with the bylaw. We propose to use a wooden fence, so the AT&amp;T's equipment won't be seen, it'll surround the, the new monopole site where the tower's located. This is just existing photographs of the two towers here, is where Dish and T-Mobile are located, this is the tower to the west, it does not have any carriers on it. The shift in the tower itself is about 25 feet from this existing tower west, where the monopole will be placed. This is just a close-up of the T-Mobile installation, the Dish installation, and then the existing compound at the base where that guy tower's located, and as I said, that'll be removed. So, as mentioned in the notice that was read, we're in the commercial wireless communication overlay district 4, we need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, it's an 8.4 acre site, there's a solar project going on, and basically what we have is two non-conforming towers, because they are guy towers, we'll replace with a monopole which will be conforming. We meet all the setback requirements, the closest property line is 194 feet, that's from the southern property boundary. AT&amp;T does have a, does provide service for FirstNet, which is a public safety network for our first responders, this will allow AT&amp;T to provide FirstNet service, I believe the Norfolk Fire Department and Metacomit are both.
Yeah, the comments right there.
Are both FirstNet customers. Tower doesn't have to be lit, the existing tower's not lit, we can go up to 200 feet without FAA lighting, and the cumulative emissions is 8.06% of the FCC maximum, and that includes all of the carriers. What I'm showing now is AT&amp;T's network, these are the adjoining sites that AT&amp;T has on air currently, they all kind of come together at the proposed location, but just to give you a sense of where AT&amp;T's network is, and you'll see when we produce our coverage maps, you'll see each of those existing sites are little black stars, and obviously, they produce green, you have yellow, mine has orange, but we produce, we produce a 360-degree pattern generally of coverage, so all the little black di, all the little black stars, AT&amp;T's existing sites, this blue star in the middle is the proposed location, as you'll see, lots of white, lots of orange, very little green, and so we produced a coverage map to show what the coverage would look like if and when this facility is constructed and operational. You'll see the big green pattern, and the orange goes much further out from the center of the proposed location.
Our commercial properties in an area take a big dip.
They do.
Yeah, probably in the, the four kicks areas, there are two parents complaining about the coverage.
We have some coverage statistics, and all of these materials were in the package that we submitted.
Uh huh.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, like as I said, we have folks here from each of our kind of levels of expertise, engineering, radio frequency engineering, we think this is just a great project from a, from a visibility standpoint, from a coverage We call them drop and swap, in this case, it's drop and swaps, so we get rid of two.
Two for one.
Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, any, any services being removed from the existing towers?
No, it, it is only those two, only T-Mobile and Dish are on them, otherwise the tower's on the useless list.
No need for this.
For the second tower?
Either tower, either.
At this point, it didn't, they were used for FM, AM radio.
One was AM radio station, right?
It had to be AM radio.
One was AM, I think.
And they're not designed for wa, cellular or wireless facilities, we're putting much more equipment up on the towers these days, and, you know, a steel monopole or a steel, you know, erecta set kind of facility just accommodates the loads that are going up.
Can we make it look like a giant spruce tree?
Right, yeah, 'cause they cut every tree down there.
So, now you could be the one fake tree right up there, that'd be great.
At least get a palm tree if it's.
That's right, let's go palm.
It might look, it might look like a toilet brush.
Yeah, exactly.
It'd be a very tall tree.
It's right in the middle of the solar farm, so.
It is.
It is.
So, who owns, who owns that? The solar farm owns that?
No, they do not, so whoever, the property owner is the solar company.
Yeah.
But we, we actually have an easement, so we don't have a lease agreement, we have an easement for our, all of those, for as long as we keep it, I guess, but we have an easement for the area, all of the guys, all of the anchors on both towers, we, we have an easement interest in those properties.
So, you're gonna release those easements once you release the?
Not necessarily, I mean, they're perpetual.
Perpetual easement.
Yeah, that's true.
It's better, they don't have any tax liability.
But we do expect there'll be a condition that both towers will be removed, because that's part of our, you know, presentation to the board, and part of our special permit.
And just a question on your submittal, thank, thank you for the presentation, just to clarify for me, again, I'm a million dollar expert anywhere near, close to it in this area at all. Number two, it says, "The height of the antenna of the wireless communications facility shall not exceed a height of 110 feet." You'll, you'll exceed that, but you're coming lower than what's existing.
That's correct.
But, but you're still exceeding 110 feet.
We are.
So, are you asking, does that require a variance or a special permit?
It doesn't, because the existing towers are non-conforming, so.
But you're changing the location.
We are, just slightly, 25.
Just wanna clarify, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I don't wanna have a decision and have it be challenged and things, so are we okay with that as, as a, as a special permit and not a variance?
So, it's interesting.
So, so the, like, and it says, "The antennas shall not exceed the height greater than the highest point of the existing tower." Well, it's not, it'll be a new tower, but, so really, I just wanted, I just want a clarification on how this decision should be on that section.
Actually, don't think it's a variance, I think it's discretionary within, because the plan board also reviews this as well.
I'm just pointing it out, so we, you know, these things get reviewed and challenged and so forth, that we understand that, that it would be a new pole, it's not in the same pole, it's lower than what's existing, but it's higher than what, right, but it's higher than what the bylaw allows as a matter of right.
Yes, I, I think in previous decisions that you've rendered, and this is where I get the, T-Mobile, and I'm not sure of Dish's elevation, are actually above, and those relate to utility stanchions, now, there's no utility stanchion here, so there was some discretion with the special permit when you granted it for T-Mobile, to actually be above the height of 110 feet, and your, your decision, which I did file with you, recognizes that, so they said, "Well, it's sort of like a utility stanchion, because it's a, it's a tall structure," but it's not a utility stanchion, so AT&amp;T, as part of our application, has shown that we need the additional height, so I think there's plenty to rely on there, and I think the board has.
I understand from, I understand from a practical standpoint, I just wanna make sure that whatever we decide is, is pretty solid, that's all.
I could, I could definitely, like, I see where, I see kind of like the splitting of the hair, but I think this really is, you know, it's using this, there's a lot of it that I think we could really just call it a replacement, it's not exacerbating the nonconformity, it's becoming.
Less nonconforming.
That's, that's the purpose.
That's, that's the discussion I wanted to have publicly, so it's on the record, so thank you.
It's less, it's less nonconforming.
Correct.
So, in terms of.
Becoming more conforming over time, it's the whole purpose, so.
Right.
So, the only thing that I would want changed is the verbiage, I don't want a wooden fence, I want a composite fence. Wooden fence will be rotted out in five years, I want a composite fence that lasts 20 years, because this structure's gonna be there well over, so composite fence.
Oh, but this is a matter of taste, I, you know, I would never allow composite in my garden.
No, it's a matter of life, of lifestyle.
What if you, what if, what if the decision indicated there always has to be a fence?
Well, it has to be a fence, but it, they're gonna do wood for, for aesthetics, right? We don't want a white vinyl fence, because we don't want eyes drawn to it, but a composite fence stains out like cedar.
Hey Mike, this is in the middle of that photo.
Yeah, we can't see it anyway.
There's nothing up there, except the police station.
You can see it from, from Dedham Street, okay? You can literally see it from Dunkin' Donuts, look, and you can see, I was there today, you can see both antennas and all the structures, there's not a, a tree left.
There isn't.
It's a desert up there, so you're gonna see it.
It's a little naked up there, but I don't think we really need to split hairs over their fencing material.
Yeah, that was what's going up there, I mean, you got this big tower and you're worried about.
We're actually looking to match what was there, I can.
Okay.
But I understand your point.
Yeah, just longevity.
Yeah.
They're gonna put it up and be gone.
But, but in reality, they need to be maintaining whatever is there, so.
The decision is always said it has to be.
So, if the fence rocks, they gotta put a new fence up.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, we have no issue with, I mean, we don't have a great issue with the type of fence, but we can, we have no issue with maintaining the fence, and again, the idea was, at some point, it was decided, use a wooden fence, and we're just gonna expand that for the monopole.
It's not shiny and reflective.
They're using the same spot, right?
That's true.
Exactly.
They're basically, they're basically the same spot the monopoles go, right?
Yep.
Just gonna add a pad for the new tower.
It's about 20, 25 feet to the west.
So, clearly less nonconforming.
It definitely looks like the moon.
Are there gonna be panels all around that?
Yep.
There are, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, because the, the approval of, that we had to approve, I believe the panels are all around it.
They're coming back to change that, too, right?
I haven't seen that, so, right now.
No, there are panels around it, yes.
There are panels.
There will be panels around it.
Yeah, there's panels in the tower right now.
No, he's talking about.
Solar panels.
They're around, but.
I'm talking.
Don't we have a very limited horse in this race anyway, from like a federal?
No, we really have very little.
You have a pony.
We like to be respectful of the locals.
Well, I know you do it out of respect, but I know, you know.
But, I mean, honestly, I think we're, we're making a site less nonconforming by allowing the monopole.
I, I am biased, because I do have AT&amp;T, and I saw that coverage map, and my house is not going to be included, but this is, this is better service, it makes sense to do this.
No.
Yeah, we need one on the other end of town, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're gonna, they're gonna cover the commuter rail, too, now, this is exciting, this is, now, when you're trying to get your ticket, when the service is coming by, you can get it.
We're filming over the farm, I'm sure.
Hey, good one.
They've actually talked.
No butters are here, right?
Are there any butters?
I'll be at a appeal.
No audience, okay.
Anybody else have any questions? I see you out here, you have any questions?
I'm the RF engineer.
Okay, alright, you got no questions, I guess.
We got no questions.
I have answers.
We have no questions for you.
We have no questions.
Should we close the hearing?
I think we should close the hearing.
I make the motion, close the hearing for the application for, for the wireless tower at 100R Pond Street.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye, roll call vote.
Aye, Josephino.
Tim Martin, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
I agree.
Chris Makeaff, aye.
Thank you.
I think we're prepared to deliberate this, or?
Yeah, we could deliberate that.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.
Any chance you'll deliberate this evening?
We will, 100%.
You what?
We'll deliberate tonight.
I'll stick around then.
Alright.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the attention.
You're welcome, no, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, let's see what else is on my agenda here.
We have a deliberation for, for the.
I think we already.
Notice a decision, right?
Notice a decision.
It's just notice of decision, we just need to vote the decision notice.
Present the latest.
This is the newest one.
Yeah.
This is the appeal, the appeal.
Forgot to print the topic.
For, um.
It's the same first page.
14 stopover road.
It's not me.
What? No.
Yeah, no, it wasn't you, it was, though Josephine's not here, but.
We, we literally accepted by signing it anyway, right? So, Josephine can come in and sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, you have to accept the decision written, right?
Yeah, yep, can we do that? Without Josephine?
How about, Mike or Courtney, just accept it as written, and then, just, I could.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, you weren't here, I know. Courtney, you weren't there either last night, right?
I wasn't either, I was in Connecticut.
Josephine dropped off, she wasn't feeling well.
Yeah, she dropped off. Actually, there's not a, we're not up at, hold on, I don't believe we're on a time crunch, so we could just vote at the December meeting.
Okay.
Because.
This has been continued so many times.
Yeah, and they're also granted time, yeah.
Did he submit a writing on that, to allow them?
No.
I don't think he did, but I'm not sure he asked for it.
What's that?
I don't know if we asked for, for a waiver from him or continuance on the decision.
We did, yeah.
I was about five years old when this started.
I wasn't born yet then.
Thank you. I feel like I was five years old when this started.
No, it's a pipe cleaner.
Oh, no.
Those type of towers, if the.
Oh, they, they look awful, even the ones up on the, the ones up in the White Mountains.
If it was all trees there still, then we would have that discussion, but there's no trees.
It looks like a toilet bowl cleaner.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, when they stand out by themselves, no.
Well, even the ones up in the White Mountains that look like that, you can still see them, and they stand right out.
Just of the trees. Just so you can see, I just wanted to show you.
I think, I think they're okay.
Extension, so you're not, you're not up against a time crunch.
Okay, we have extensions through one, I can't see that far.
Alright.
It was indefinite.
Okay, good, okay.
So, no motion is needed tonight, right?
No, we'll just, we'll put it on.
We'll just put it on December.
Josephine is signed next one.
Yeah.
Alright, also, we already accepted minutes for October.
We did, yep.
And we have some town planner updates from the.
Fall meeting.
From the fall.
Yeah, but you want to deliberate, so.
Yeah, let's.
We could deliberate and let that go.
Yeah, let's, uh.
We're into deliberations.
Yeah, we are, 'cause we're just.
Anybody have anything they wanna add or subtract from whatever was discussed, or do we wanna just?
Vote.
You wanna make a motion to vote on this?
Yeah, I'm trying, you need to vote on the decision as written as well.
Yeah, as written, although I think we're gonna have to swap out members, 'cause Josephine was on here, so, Courtney or Mike, who wanna?
Does the decision require a fence, is that what, just so it's in there?
Yeah, there's a fence in there.
Yeah, he brought it off.
Okay, yep, number two, yep.
They're a removal bond.
Condition two, yep. A removal bond.
They're a removal bond condition for the new, for the new monopole.
Good question.
What?
A, a removal bond, so if they.
Removal bond, they abandon it and leave it for us, so that we can pull a bond to get rid of the new pole.
Probably didn't ask for that.
No. So, you want a bond.
You can make it a condition.
Yeah, let's, uh.
Well, they're, they're getting rid of the other two.
But, but this new one.
Well, yeah, but they're building a new one.
Right, so we need a bond just for the new one, because they're removing the other two, that's part of the stipulation.
Yeah, the old, the old ones, the, the ship has sailed there, but whenever you put up a new pole, we want a bond to get rid of it, in case they abandon their junk. It's not junk, but.
No, yeah.
Not yet, but it will be someday, probably not that soon, because they swap panels every two years.
Alright, then we, we need to, we'll have to add that in as a condition, it's not in the condition.
And who's gonna make that determination?
What, the dollar amount?
Cost?
Yeah.
Isn't.
This is, it's pretty standard.
Okay, but it needs to go through the decision now.
There's gotta be a, yeah, there's gotta.
So, how much?
What would, what would a normal bond?
How much is this project?
I typically see them in zoning bylaws, 50,000.
How much is that pole worth?
Pole town?
Yeah.
A hundred thousand dollar bond.
Yeah, yeah, look at them leases.
You got the structures, you got the concrete, hundred grand.
Especially when it could be years from now.
But it's a removal.
Right.
Yeah, we're only.
So if it costs 100,000 to put up.
Correct.
No, no, no.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying remove it, get rid of the cans.
They decommission it, they're dealt with it, it doesn't stay there forever.
Yeah, it doesn't cost as much.
How do you know what's in there?
Doesn't cost as much to take it down as it does to go up.
You going that far? To remove the concrete and everything?
If you're taking it out.
Depends when you do it, you do it now, you do it 50 years from now.
Cellular phones are no longer used.
How do you know the cost 50 years from now?
The whole thing's gotta go away.
I know.
That's what I'm saying, how do you know the cost?
Yeah, it's 20 years from now, so if you say 50 today, that's.
We don't need to decide on the cost, Mike, we just ask for a removal bond of, you know, a sufficient surety, we let the bond business deal with it.
Yeah, well said, well said.
Do they do that?
You need it for the decision.
The only, our responsibility here is just to make sure we got a way to get rid of it.
You want to put a minimum on that?
This thing's built, come on, guys.
Do you want to put a minimum amount on that?
Yeah, put a minimum.
Although, just an idea, or you just want to let the bond company do it?
Whatever they deem a sufficient surety for removal, I think is, you know, 50,000, 50,000 is pretty standard, but like, honestly, it all depends on who you hire to take one of these down, it might not cost that much.
It could be 20 years.
Could be 70, could be 100 years, could be 200 years from now. I'll still be sitting here.
It may never come down like the two existing ones.
No, 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 the two existing ones.
Gosh, because it's gonna be solar panels all around.
Yeah, but we don't have any bond on it.
Yeah, but they agree to take, that's part of the condition.
They gotta get it up.
Let me just tell them, that's part of the condition, is taking those down.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but could we just condition?
Condition a bond for removal of the new monopole when life is terminated, or something.
The other suggestion I would have is that, you know, you can have a minimum of, say, 50,000, and subject to, you know, the reasonable interpretation, or the reasonable cost, you know, pursued by the building commissioner, are you a building commissioner, building inspector?
Yep.
I see, I see those, that, that way, if the building official becomes unreasonable, we can come back to the board.
$50,000.
50,000.
Period.
Period, that's fine. Escalating 10% every year.
It'll be renewed every year, so.
Reviewed each year.
Yeah.
And renewed.
And renewed each year, and reviewed for bond, whether the bond needs to be increased or whatever.
Right, 10 years from now, it might need to be 70 grand, who knows?
Right, but let's put it in at 50 for now, and then reevaluate it each year at resigning.
Right, thank you, Courtney, good catch.
Good catch, Courtney.
So we add it, and then, so it sounds like Courtney wants to vote on it.
Yeah. She wants good reception in the house.
And the tree.
She can't vote.
She can't vote, she can't vote, she has AT&amp;T.
I'll put Mike's name, then.
We all have a conflict, don't we?
The only one of us, the only one of us that can vote, the only one of us that can vote is probably you, you have Verizon, because there's no Verizon on the pole.
Yeah.
I have T-Mobile, I can't do it.
All right, so.
You're gonna vote against me.
That works, anyway, we're all conflicted.
I need a fifth, I mean, technically, I don't need a fifth number, but I'll put you on.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no issue with this.
You want to make a motion, Joe?
Pretty simple.
Make a motion.
Making a motion that we approve the special permit for the wireless communication tower at 100 R. Pond Street for AT&amp;T and SBA.
As written with an amendment.
As the decision is drafted, with an amendment to add a bond requirement.
Or do you have to separately vote the decision when we're in?
No, you'll vote as amended, as revised, however.
You can say it as amended.
As revised with bond.
As amended with bond.
Yeah, as amended for the additional commitment for the bond, and the correct voting numbers.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Aye, Joseph Bastiano.
Aye, David Axberg.
Tim Martin, aye.
Mike Brogan, aye.
Chris Mecap, aye. Chris Mecap, aye.
Very good, Chris, thank you, gotcha.
You all voted here.
Courtney's being quiet, because she didn't need to vote.
Oh, you don't need me.
No, we don't.
Like Brogan's fit.
That's right. You have too much skin in the game.
That's right.
That's right.
Keep my voting record.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Have a nice holiday.
Yeah, have a great holiday.
We're looking forward to better reception.
And lower prices, right?
Oh, lower prices?
That was part of the decision.
Oh, is that what, I thought I saw that.
Right now, you see, T-Mobile's going down under AT&amp;T, so you're gonna get worse.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Although, they're keeping them.
No, 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 but T-Mobile, T-Mobile's not going on a lower, they're getting, they're actually going higher on the new pole than they are on the guy pole.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So maybe I will.
They'll have more antennas.
They'll have more antennas, there you go, good job.
Catch the detail.
Just point one right directly to my house.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just recap town meeting real quick, both zoning articles passed, so we might see some folks come in for RV or module home, if they're doing some major renovations, we'll see.
Hey.
Onto the AG.
I think that was a good move, and I, and town meeting sounded, they were all very positive about them, so.
Progress is good.
And then the inclusionary bylaw got revised down to 10%.
Okay.
That was it, and I know the, the demolition delay did get approved at 12 versus the six months, but.
Yep, it did. On historical homes, that are 50 years, 50, if your home is 50 years or older.
75.
It is 50, well.
75.
75, yeah, 75, sorry.
Norfolk's a 75.
Yeah.
50 is for inclusion on the register.
Correct, 75 years or older, you have to, they have the right to slow you down for six months.
A stay on development.
And, or 12 months, if they, they want to try and preserve your home, if it's 75 or greater. Now, not all 75-year-old homes would meet the criteria, and they don't all, they don't all come forward, but they have the right to do it on any 75-year-old home. So if all of a sudden I said, I want to tear my home down, which is probably one of the oldest homes in Norfolk.
Is that a pledge of renovation, too?
Well, it depends upon how, no.
No.
No, it's a demo, it's a demo. Yeah, it's only demo.
So you could leave two studs.
35's not that old.
No.
18 months.
30 days.
Do they, really?
The whole purpose of the stay is to get folks to come in and talk.
So they have 45 days, so.
Work your time to inventory.
Right.
They have 45 days to act once it's filed. The big thing with this is if somebody, they probably need to move on the demo permit, so they know, you know what I mean? Not wait around, like.
Right, right, right.
If you're gonna do a demo, get your demo permit in, right?
Correct.
So it goes before the historic commission.
Correct.
So you get an answer or not.
Yeah, I was always, to be honest with you, after I saw the interior of the Warelands after the flooding, and the, that was watered, destroyed, I have no idea why they never tore that place down, they should have torn it down. I hate to say that, because it's a nice old home, but it's not a nice old home, I mean, it's a mess.
It's historical, it's, that is.
Historical.
The barn, the barn is what's on the historical, it's not the house.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the barn is in worse shape than the house.
Oh, God, it is, okay.
Yeah, one whole side's almost gone.
What is this?
Warelands on Boardman Street.
On the bad corner.
Bad corner of Boardman Street there?
Oh, yeah.
So they resided the whole front, they put all the windows in it, I mean, they definitely had guns blazing for a while, but that doesn't seem to be anything going on, someone lives in the cottage.
Somebody does live, that's the milk parlor.
Yes, yep.
The cottage.
Yeah, but it was originally the milk parlor.
Yeah.